Mayor's office, ready when you are.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk. Please call the rules so that we might establish a quorum.
Vice Mayor Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. I would ask if Councilmember Jennings would do us the honor of both the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance, please.
It would be my pleasure, Mayor. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements of the honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nissian, the Southern Mido, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwin and Wooton peoples, and the people of the Wooton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. And now the pledge of allegiance? Please salute. I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag.
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings, and good evening to all of my colleagues, the city staff, and especially the members of the public. We have a relatively short agenda today, I believe. You never know. Let us begin with the consent calendar. I do have some statement or so.
Can I interrupt for a second? We do have a reso. Perhaps before the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it on my agenda here. Please, then, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. So what we want to do right now is acknowledge Teresa Hengi, who has been in our planning department for quite a long time. In fact, she started, if you get in the Wayback Machine, she started with the Parks and Recreation Department as an analyst. In 2008, she moved to community development, and in 2017 was promoted to a senior planner. Teresa has worked on a lot of the big issues in the city, our general plan updates. She worked on Centene. She worked on the rail yard specific plan, the North State University Hospital PUD, but an awful lot of just neighborhood projects. So I just want to, oh, hi Teresa. I see you there. You know, she's been an absolute delight to work with. I've worked with Teresa now for years, and she's been planning mostly north of the river during my tenure. And so we've worked on an awful lot of issues in the River District and the Thomas and virtually everything I've been working on. It seems like Teresa and I have had conversations monthly, if not oftener. And I have to say that she has been just wonderful, a true delight to work with, always cheerful, always helpful, always informative. And when issues arose, she was very able to get to the heart of the issue, to work with people who had applications in, solve problems. And I can tell you that all the developers that I've worked with sing the praises of Teresa Hengi. She is, well, it's going to be a real loss for us of the city. Our planning department is First Cabin. Overall, we have great employees in the planning department, and I'm sure that they will miss her terribly as well because she's just, you know, so much fun to collaborate with. Anyway, we've got this resolution for you, Teresa. I know we will be sending it to you. But I just want you to know that the city of Sacramento really appreciates your 21 years of service and that we truly wish you well in retirement. You're way too young to retire. I'm a testament to that. I've still got some years on me, and I'm a lot older than you, but I do want you to have a lot of fun and fully enjoy your life wherever your path leads you. And perhaps other council members would have something to say as well.
Yes, thank you for kicking that off, Councilmember Harris. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Thank you, but I'm not speaking to Ms. Higginie because I told her she wasn't allowed to leave. So this is against my wishes. She has been assigned up here in District One for a long time. I'm not sure how we're going to get anything done now, but you are, Teresa, so deserving. You've been an incredible partner. And, you know, I think one thing that really speaks to your amazing skill set and talent, and you're another great woman to celebrate on International Women's Day because you give everything you've got to your city. And I think one of the best indicators of that for me was my community leaders love you, but the developers love working with you too, and so does my team, and so does your team. You really are someone who can use your superpowers to bring folks together, and as a result of your good work, thousands of homes for people to buy and live in and apartments, low income, mixed income, you know, the reuse on the arena, you've been a big part of it. Centene, Teresa, that's, you've brought thousands of jobs for people, high-wage jobs. They get to have a better quality of life because, you know, you were a planner in the city of Sacramento, and you you found ways to make those things happen, those projects happen. And if you drive around my district, you'll see Ms. Higginie's handiwork everywhere, and you'll see lots of people out riding their bikes on bike paths that she helped fight for and go into work to jobs that she helped move here and living their lives in houses that she helped get built in our city. So you made a really big difference, and I'm glad you chose this for your career, and I'm really glad that our paths crossed for a while. My community and our city are all better for your time in service here, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Laloe.
North Sacramento. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Teresa, I mean, everything that Vice Mayor and Councilmember Harris alluded to, it's exactly the notes that I had taken down. Absolute delight to work with. I truly appreciate you, your commitment to our city, and just your attitude. I know that I've approached you a few times and not knowing what the heck is going on or why this project is coming in, and the fact that not only you know about the project, you kind of, you know exactly what's surrounding this project, how it's affecting it, who is the developer, who is the architect? You know them on like by first name basis, and, you know, if I had an issue, the comment of, you know what, you're right, don't worry, let me call this architect. I've worked with him in the past. He's pretty good. We can fix that. So I think it's a huge, huge loss for the city. I do, I thought Vice Mayor, when she indicated that you cannot talk because you're not going anywhere, I thought that was a motion she was putting out there, and I was about to second it and bring it to a vote. But again, it was a very short time that I've had the pleasure of working with you, but you're an amazing individual. Thank you so much for educating me when it comes to planning and how one looks at it, and I wish you nothing but the best. And truly, it's a huge loss, and but still, great job. Thank you so much for being you, and best of luck to you with whatever you have planned out for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would just add that, you know, every public servant brings a unique contribution and skill set to whatever they do, and that's true of our entire city workforce. When I think about what you've done, Teresa, you have been the mediator, the wise voice, the the soothsayer for how our community should grow and develop. And in some very difficult situations where those who want to grow and grow fast have an opinion, where the community believes that the development should be done in a certain way, where the council members have strong opinions, it takes somebody who others have confidence in to be able to guide us to the right place, and I'm especially grateful for your work on Centene. Because together with Vice Mayor Ashby, together we landed a big plane there that is a very big achievement for the city of Sacramento and our employment base. And you were a very big part of that, so thank you. And enjoy your retirement. I will, I will move the substitute motion that allows Teresa to retire and to enjoy, and to enjoy her life.
So Mayor, I'll second that. Actually, we don't have a choice. This is still a free country, and she is free to go with our blessings, but one final note. One of our, one of our fine developers, Dave Bugato, I noticed that he wrote a note on her farewell card in which he noted that Teresa helped him grow in his professional development. Now, to me, that just says it all. If you can take a guy as First Cabin as Dave Bugato and help him grow in his professional development, that means you are one outstanding planner. Teresa, we wish you all the best.
Thank you so much. I do want to say it's been such an honor and a privilege working for the city of Sacramento, the city of Sacramento being the community groups, the residents, the property owners, the the business owners, the developers, the developers' attorneys, the commissioners and the council and their staff. It's just been such an honor, but I have to say that much of my success is attributed to my coworkers. They are so hardworking, and they work hard to get their job done, but also work hard to get me what I need to get my job done. I have found the culture of collaboration and culture of fun and humor among my staff members or coworkers to be so motivational. They motivated me to get a lot more done than I probably even wanted to. So again, any, much of the success I have had is attributed to my coworkers, and I do love working for the city, and I love living in the city, and I'm looking forward to all the great things that are to come forward, and thank you, and thank to all, thank you to all of those who worked on this for me. It is very meaningful for me, and again, it's been such an honor and a privilege. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Maybe we'll see you back. We hope so. You're always welcome to weigh in and say you guys should do this, or do that, or give us your opinion on any.
That's right. I'm coming on Tuesdays now.
Yeah, exactly. Maybe in person soon. Thank you, Teresa. Terrific. Consent calendar, members, are there items that any member would like to remove from the consent calendar to comment on separately?
Item one for me.
Item one, Councilmember Chenier. Councilmember Laloe.
Item two and eight.
So you want to talk about them separately?
I just talk. I just have some questions. Yes.
Okay, yes, 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 yes. Okay. Okay, anybody else? I don't see anybody else, so let's start with item one, Councilmember Chenier.
Thanks, Mayor, and I'm just looking for a little bit of clarity, and I talked to the city manager today about this. I've always also talked to our city attorney. So on item one, as that we add to the long ledge law book, a specific policy, in our council rules, the standing committee chairs have the ability to directly put things on their logs for the standing committees. So I don't know why we would be voting on this, and I don't want to set a precedent that anything that goes to any of the standing committees has to get a council vote first. So that's on item one, and I don't know, Mr. City Manager or Madam Clerk, I don't think we should be voting on that.
So Councilmember Chenier, we did talk about this, and that is one of the concerns that you raised early on when we brought this procedure forward. It's something I'm happy to sit down and work with you to see how we can address those and have more clarity. We'll put something out there too, because there was a question, just not on the standing committee, but some of the requests that come from, you know, the boards and commissions and the things like that. So I'd be happy to work with you to provide clarity. Now send something out to the mayor and council just so that it's, it's clear.
So what do we do about this item? It's in Chapter 12, Section B, Section F, which says that the city manager, what is it? With approval of the city clerk, city manager, or committee chair, an item may be sent directly to a standing committee. So that's what I'm hoping to do, and we haven't changed. I mean, I think this is one of the reasons we need some kind of workshop on city rules and procedures. I will note we're supposed to look at them every year. We haven't done that since January of 2020, so we're overdue on that as a council.
So I just wonder if Howard and I could, the city manager and I, might sit down together and work through some of this and come back jointly to the city council. I want to protect the manager and the city staff's legitimate concern about prioritization, right? And as I said, the log is an imperfect way to do that, but it's a, it's a good faith effort and attempt to try to help them, and I want to support that. On the other hand, Jay's right, that the council rules and procedures are something that is by definition the council prerogative. So, and of course, the mayor can agendize that, so we can put it on. So I just think a little bit of, a little bit of work together about what belongs on the log, what doesn't. And then as we are working with the Vice Mayor Ashby and the Chair of P and P E on really framing up this question about what the role of our committees are. Because in the legislature, I'll just say, members have the right to have a bill heard, so everybody gets their matter heard. But if the committee says the bill should not go forward to the full House, the bill is dead until the next year. And I think we are, we're not clear yet on what the actual role of committees are. And in part, that would help answer the question that the city manager has brought forward with this log, which is, what do we work on? Well, one way to do it is if the council gets the go-ahead, the council member gets the go-ahead from the relevant committee to pass X, Y, Z, whether it's an ordinance or an idea or something onto the city council, then by definition, yes, the city staff is being asked to prioritize that. There are different ways to filter this. And what we're doing now is a good faith effort and maybe have a really good use, but I think we've got to grapple with the creative tension here amongst all of us trying to do our jobs.
Yeah, and I do think, Mayor, I mean, you're 100% right. In my mind, strengthening the roles of the committees takes a little bit of the challenge away, and I understand what the city manager and staff are going through of what to prioritize. I think that's the important question. And I've made a commitment to the city manager and others that I'm happy to work on that, however, however we do it. I just think at this point, and I'm just looking at the item before us today, given the council rules and procedures that we shouldn't be voting on item one.
Madam City Attorney, do you want to weigh in on this at all? I know last week we, I didn't know that you were trying to get in. I apologize for that.
That's, that's, that's fine, Mayor, and I know we had, I had an opportunity to discuss this with the Councilmember Chenier earlier today, and I would refer to it as glitches. We're capturing everything requested of the staff right now in this council log, but there are rules that already apply as part of the council policies, such as the long ledge calendar. And so requests like this should just go directly to the long ledge to schedule. It's just being captured here right now, and I'll also work with the city manager and yourself, Mayor, too, so we can figure out how this can be smoothed out in the future.
Okay, do you object then to taking, for Councilmember Chenier, so I guess that we take number one? No, no, excuse me, number two?
No, well, it's number one. I want to address number two very briefly. It's not as important as, I just don't want to set precedent.
I would just, I would just use your council rule and put number one on the long ledge.
Okay.
That's where it should go.
So Howard, you're okay with taking one off this particular item? Okay, that'll be off when we do the consent calendar. Okay, Jay?
And then on number two, and this is, I don't care if we vote on this or not, but we just need to do this. We're supposed to do it annually. As I said, we haven't done it since January of 2020, and getting some clarification, especially with the work that's going on from Vice Mayor Ashby, which I think is really important, about how commissions report back to us, how we interact with them. I think working through all of that will, the time will be well spent and save us a lot of time and unclearity later on. So number, number two, I'm happy to leave on just making that comment about it.
Okay, so for purposes of the motion for the log item, item one, number one on the log, one subdivision one will be removed from the consideration here is what we're sort of, I think, all agreeing to.
That would be my request.
Okay, so let's make that part of the motion then when it is time. Let's now move to item number two, and this is Councilmember.
Mayor, I just have a comment on the same item.
Okay, I didn't have you signed up there. Sorry about that, Jeff. Go ahead.
Yeah, so Jay, I agree with you that we already have rules in place, you know, like the ability of the, of our standing committee member to add something to the log. And I think that you called that out appropriately. I just wanted to say that, you know, I brought this log idea forward because we do need to prioritize what we want staff to work on, and there are, there are times when other issues are brought up, not by standing committee chairpersons, that are appropriate to discuss at council, to see if we agree that this is an idea that we want to pursue. And I quite agree with you that every year we should look at our council rules and procedures. So I think you're, you're right, you're spot on here, that you certainly have the right to put that on the L and L log and that it doesn't require a vote in this setting. So I appreciate you bringing that forward, and clarity from both the manager and the attorney are welcome. So it's a good conversation to have.
No, thanks, Jeff. And again, on most of the things that we'll hopefully discuss, I'm agnostic. It just needs to be uniform and needs to move forward in that.
Fair enough.
Okay, very good. Council, Mayor Protem Garrett, do you have a comment on this item?
It was, but, you know, it was just to concur with, with Councilmember Chenier, and also, I frankly think that having item two on there also sets a precedent that we actually have to vote on asking the mayor to put item on the council. I mean, it's, it's, it's perfunctory. I don't, I don't see a need for that. So anyways, that's, that's my point. I'm finally going to move forward. Again, my objection's with the log. I think the committee process is better suited, and we'll love to discuss this moving forward.
Okay, well, we kept the log discussion under 15 minutes. That's good. Let's move on to item two, which is, Councilmember Laloe had a comment or a question.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. On, on item number two, it's my understanding that the Office of Cannabis is hiring or has a position to hire an attorney that would be hearing administrative appeals. Is this a, are we outsourcing this to an attorney, or is this a full-time attorney that attending, joining our city staff?
Councilmember Laloe, I believe I can answer that. We currently have administrative hearing officers that provide the due process component of any of our penalty programs, administrative penalties. So we are always adding to that roster of hearing officers because we have a lot of hearings. So this is not an attorney employed with the city. This is a hearing officer who happens to be an attorney. Does that answer your question?
And with this position, would they be reporting to you directly? So it's, it's under your supervision?
Well, they're actually appointed by the council, which is why the council's making the appointment tonight or being asked to. So they are, they report to the city. They're independent of my office, although a member of my office does advise them and work with them, and, you know, in the event that they need assistance with any of their acts, but they are, they are intended to be independent because they pass judgment on whether or not the city staff comply with all the due process requirements, all the code requirements, and the property owners are typically protesting an action taken by the city.
Okay, and I need your help on this, Madam Attorney, and that is having one person that handles those, especially in this industry. Hey, to do something today where, you know, four years from now or three years from now, we see that there might have been some conflict of interest that were involved. If you could kind of address that for me, I would greatly appreciate it.
Yes, we, we have several of these hearing officers, and that's not just the cannabis cases. And typically, the illegal growhouses, the ones where we go, the police department goes in and arrests people for growing cannabis illegally. But we have them in code cases, a lot of other mandatory provisions of the code that people violate. These hearing officers sit in judgment of that. They're like a court, only an administrative court. The property owners, or excuse me, the aggrieved parties do have the ability to writ a decision if they think there was some bias or unfairness, and then the court would review it and determine whether or not the decision was appropriately made and comported with due process requirements and the law. So there is the ability for there to be a review. But we, we, I will say this, our office does make sure that if we see, for example, a rogue administrative hearing officer or hearing officer that is abusing their authority, then we would make the recommendation to this council to remove them from the, from the accepted list.
That was kind of my concern, that who is this person reporting to, right? Is it your office? Is it the council? Is it the Office of Cannabis? So if there is a checks and balance, I think it would minimize questions or different looks down, you know, in the future at least. Because this is a growing industry, and, you know, we've seen in the past certain things that some of our policies were taken advantage of and, you know, had created some issues for us. So I just want to make sure if, if your office is also overseeing this, then great, you know, but if they're kind of on their own and they just come back with recommendations to the Office of Cannabis, you know, I do have some more questions and concerns that I would like to discuss it with you.
Absolutely. I can follow up with you, make an appointment, and then we can, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And then as far as item A, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I understand that this is a grant. It's a go-biz, and the question is, can, can, can the city take this, accept this money? But how is this money distributed? Who's in charge of it? And what is the policy regarding this fund?
Good evening. Davina Smith, I'm the program manager for the Office of Cannabis Management. This is the fourth year of funding that the state has offered for equity members who want to pursue cannabis businesses in the state of California. Only jurisdictions that have an equity program are allowed to apply for this. These grants are limited to directly pay to a cannabis equity member, and they have to be either be grants, interest loans or no-interest loans, and those are, you're also allowed to do 10% admin and 10% for direct technical assistance. So that's the parameters that the state put on the loans. We have done outreach to our core community through a series of meetings, surveys, and throughout that six-month process, we developed a way of pursuing these grants and granting them out to people with certain checks and balances on those. In the last Um, in the last grant funding round that we did, uh, we gave about a little less than half the money out and then required people to show a seventy percent of the receipts that have been spent towards the, the, on, um, approved business expenses before we released the other portion of the funds to them. And that was our checks and balances there, as I know you're concerned about that. And so those are the the state's parameters and our parameters on that.
Right, so if if we have individuals that, um, did not go through the core program, yet they were still faced with the war on drugs in the eighties and they were affected, um, I'm assuming they would qualify for this grant as well?
So the the state requires that they be a member of the local equity community, so they have to be, um, the local jurisdiction has to verify that they are a core or a local equity member, depending upon where you are. So we would have to go through that process, um, and that process, of course, was approved by the council um, with input from the city attorney's office. So we would need to go through that again if we were going to change that, but that print, that 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 was developed back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and it's been implemented since then.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Mayor, can I ask for this item to be approved, but yet, uh, request more of a detailed observation of this grant and how it is dispersed? I think this requires some meeting with, uh, some of the core members, which I've had already, and having some of that discussion to make, to create a system that this kind of money can be kind of a, uh, revolving and 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 helping our our core participants. So
I mean, I, I'm sorry.
Accepting the grants, I'm I'm for it, but I think, uh, I would like to ask for some additional meetings on the process and the procedure of how four point three million dollars is going to get distributed.
So Ms. Ms. Smith, Director Smith and Assistant City Manager Milstein, I'm sure, uh, would be willing to have those follow-up meetings, um, you know, to make sure that you you have the detail and can communicate that with a wide variety of constituents. Can we do that informally? Is that okay? I I think.
I'm totally fine with that, as long as, um, you know, we go on the record that, uh, there has to be some additional discussion about this money and how it gets distributed. Um, you know, whether it's existing policies that we're going with, are they working or do they need to be, um, you know, updated to make sure it's more concise and direct?
If I may, so to clarify, so you're asking, um, for, uh, for us to meet around, um, uh, policies that we've spent the last six months developing, um, with input from core community and outreach to the core community? Um, and you want to, uh, look at them again? And that's the meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely. Because again, we've been, we've been talking about this industry for about a year and a half and and we haven't moved an inch. Uh, so I think it's time for us to kind of roll up our sleeves and, uh, and really get, get to the bottom of this and 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 create updated policies that would, um, obviously help the core participants. Um, or individuals that, again, were were part of the communities that got really hit really hard, but with the wars on drugs. But they just didn't go through court, they just applied, uh, like everybody else that has applied. And, you know, we need to figure out where do they stand in all this. Uh, so there's a lot of, there, there's a lot of, um, you know, concerns out there with how we're maneuvering this and, um, yeah, I think having a conversation and creating guidelines and be very transparent about those guidelines would definitely help, um, this, you know, our core participants, the industry as a whole. And as a council member, at least, I know what we, I need to say to these individuals that have been kind of waiting to hear back from us.
Councilmember Laloe, if I might, uh, so I think we could definitely take it a step further and provide this council with an update on the dispersment of these funds.
Thank you.
But the policies and the guidelines that we're using have been adopted, uh, moving forward through this council and with core participants. So if we want to have a conversation about adjusting those, we should first have one with you offline to discuss how we kind of, uh, potentially pause what we're doing and and what implications there are to the funding that we're accepting here tonight. Um, but yeah, I mean, I'm happy to have those conversations offline, uh, but also to be very transparent about who is getting awarded which dollars based on what criteria, which is the the only criteria we have right now was adopted by the council. Am I missing something, Davina?
Um, no, that that is correct. Um, the the only two things I would add is that we we do only have a year, the the state only gives us a year to completely disperse these funds, meaning we have to have them out from us and into the hands of our core community by that time. And the other thing is, we have an RFP out right now for an equity study, um, that would be looking at sort of equity in the cannabis industry and the cannabis program in the city of Sacramento. And that would also be looking at our equity program, um, and the, um, sort of the foundation documents that that set that up. So that is in process. So we we do have these things also going on, but always happy to meet with you, you and your office, um, and, uh, and talk about this further.
I I appreciate it. I just, again, I just want to clarify some of these things and how we, uh, how we give these grants. Um, I've talked to some of the core members that have received grants that I'm questioning, why do they get it? Because they're not even at the stage that they needed it. Um, so there, there's a lot of questions, and I think we just need to, uh, get a better, uh, clarity on this. Um, so, um, you just indicated that there's an RFP that's going out. It, this is in addition to the EPS uh, consulting that we have hired to bring us information, so this is in addition to that?
That's correct. This is one of those base two studies that we had talked about meeting, and it's been, it's been discussed. So that is, there's an RFP that is currently out. It's going to be closing in a couple of weeks. Um, it's already been out for about a month. Um, so yes, that is, that has been out there.
Okay, well, if you can ki- uh, connect with my office, then I I'd like to see what the policy is, and I'd like to find out, point out the things that are wrong with it and, uh, kind of suggest or, um, express some of the things that we need to implement for our core participants to be successful versus looking for, um, um, investors. And and I, that's what's happening right now, which is somewhat bothersome. So that whole equity and inclusiveness is kind of going out the window if they have to look for investors. So thank you very much. I I wait for the call then, or I'll have my office coordinate a meeting with you.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Ashby.
I'll just be really brief. I, uh, I just wanted to, I wasn't planning on chiming in at all, but you know, councilmember Laloe is asking really good questions. The marker hasn't moved on the core participants as much as anybody on this council had hoped. They come to him and complain a lot because many of them are trying to land in his district. So he's asking, I think, and the mayor was being very supportive of him, good questions to have staff come back and sort of report to us on how these dollars will move the marker for core participants and whether or not maybe we, maybe our criteria isn't quite right if we're not getting some of the results. And so just want to chime in to support him. This is exactly what councilmembers should do. And I I think, you know, we could all support that. He's just asking for information, come back. I appreciate the city manager chiming in to be very clear about how and what ways we can do that, but, you know, I would just would just ask folks to, you know, be considerate to the fact that we get calls in our districts from people who are trying to be a part of programs that we put out there into the community. It don't always function quite the way we had hoped, and sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But it's the right thing for us to do to try to keep those things on track or move them onto a better track if the one they're on isn't working. So I think councilmember Laloe is making some really good points, and I just want to be supportive of him, and I appreciate the mayor's support of him and and Howard coming in to to clear that up a little bit, not saying we need to, you know, change anything unilaterally, but these conversations should be had because the core participants have not moved as quickly into the space as we had all hoped. So.
Thank you for saying that. I mean, you know, I know everyone's overworked and overloaded, but you know, if we don't ask each other, and that's staff to council too, by the way, and council to staff hard questions, then we're not, then we're not pushing each other, right? So thank you for asking the questions and let's, um, make sure that we're getting the the result that we all want. Very good.
If I could, I just, um, wanted to to chime in briefly to say that I I think it's a little uh, premature to make any conclusion about something being wrong with the policies. I think staff, as as was mentioned, is implementing our direction. And I think a big part of these questions that that you're looking for answers to are things that we're hoping to discuss as part of that EPS process that's coming forward to Law &amp; Land, I believe, starting next week. I know we've been delayed, unfortunately, and so I just want to, um, emphasize that I don't, I don't think staff is doing anything wrong. I think they're implementing our direction as we've given them, and that a lot of the questions that you are asking, especially about the financing and accessing the market and and how, you know, we, it's really hard for anybody to access the market unless you're independently wealthy without partners. Um, and and what we could be doing to try to help support those participants, I imagine, are exactly some of the conversations that we're going to be looking at. And so I just want to make sure we don't pull staff into too many vignettes if if this is already something that we're working on through a thoughtful deliberative process and and to try to figure out how to address this holistically. So I just wanted to put that, um, two cents in, because I know staff works really hard. I do think there's a lot of misconceptions about the core program and the funding. I know there's a lot of misunderstanding, but I don't want to necessarily jump to a conclusion that we're doing anything wrong until we can have that more full kind of discussion about what our objectives are and how we want to achieve it. So I just want to make sure we don't put too many processes in line here, um, when we're already sort of working in the same direction, I think, with the same goals in mind.
I I appreciate your comment, councilmember, and, uh, again, my apologies to the staff if I came across as uh, discrediting your hard work, because I know especially this office. Um, you're, you know, and Davina, thank you so much for your commitment and all the hard work you're doing. Um, so this is nothing a staff issue. Uh, these are some of the the existing policy issues that are questionable. And I were, that those policies were not drafted by by staff, whether it was the previous cam, you know, council, uh, mayor, uh, city manager, it was way before my time. But still, I do understand your comment as well that some of these industries need investment. Um, but some of these percentages that are breaking down between core members getting the investors involved, it kind of pushes away our hard work on creating core. Um, because when you're getting investors coming in and taking a good chunk of their business, I don't think that was our intentions to begin with. So to just, uh, clarify, this is nothing against, uh, staff. My apologies if that has come across. This is a against policies that have been there for over a year that I've asked for, and this has kind of been kicked down the road, and I know it's going to uh, uh, Law &amp; Ledge. I don't know if you've seen the EPS report. Um, I've read it. I I don't know what to gain out of it. I I'll leave it up to you guys to kind of summarize it and bring it back to us from Law &amp; Ledge. Um, but we we still have a lot of work that needs to be done to just have better direction for the staff. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Jennings?
Yeah, just, just a very, uh, quick, uh, response to councilmember Laloe, and I I appreciate him bringing this to us. Um, you know, he's, he's expressed concern with the EPS report. He's expressed concern with uh, the, some of the core participants that have come to him and spoken to him about the issues that they're having. Um, I think it's great for him to have the venue to speak and understand a little bit more about our policies that we've put in place, but also for us to be able to hear from him and those who he's in contact with and see if there's something that we could be doing better. So councilmember Laloe, I applaud you for taking on this and bringing this back to our council. Hopefully, it'll come back to the whole council if we're talking about any kind of changes. I know it will, um, that need to be made, but at least, you know, get all, all of your questions answered and and then, uh, let's see where we go from there. And hopefully it doesn't interfere with our timeline as far as getting the money out to the core participants, because this is money that they need in order to move forward with their business plan. So uh, I'm just supportive of what you're doing and just be quick, but don't hurry.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, uh, councilmember Chenier?
Yeah, let me just ask really quickly for anyone, and I don't think this is a Brown Act violation, but if you have questions that you want to address, uh, as we work through three or four hearings at Law &amp; Ledge, please, uh, send them to Davina, and we will make sure that that those questions are addressed as we move forward.
Great idea. That's going to be a very important forum to be able and ask and answer a lot of questions. Okay. Members, I would take a, uh, motion on the consent calendar, and it is the full consent calendar with one amendment, item one, which is to remove the first item of item one from the log. Is there such a motion?
Consent. Move to approve. Second?
I'd say it's moved by councilmember Harris, seconded by Mayor Protem Guerra. Um, we've already heard the public testimony. And so let us call the rule.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we have not heard public testimony yet, and I have three hands raised.
I, I, that's right. We have not heard the public testimony.
So the first caller is a phone number, last four digits, four, three, six, six.
Wow.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, this is Lambert, and I I wanted to say that any time that I hear uh, what almost sounds to me like a double standard, I'm not really focused on core, but every time that I hear that group, they had to meet a criteria to be part of that group, just like we met a criteria. And anytime it seems that a group that has been disadvantaged meets the criteria, it's always, uh, some sort of obstacle. Uh, so I applaud, uh, city councilman Laloe for putting what I call the microscope of scrutiny on this, because it's always been that way. There's a pattern there. And anyone knows that if you have a business and you're delayed and delayed and delayed, especially finance, it cripples your ability to be successful. And I believe that's intentional, because it does not take that long. It, you actually do way too many equity studies. I heard equity study again tonight. What are you looking for when you're doing all these studies? Where I come from, if you study too long, you're studying wrong. So I say cut back on the equity studies, give core some of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars you spend on it, and give the other two hundred and fifty thousand to to the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. And then you'll learn something from core and our, and the Cheesecake Company. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Robert Copeland.
I have a question for the city council. Can you get your act together when it comes to rules and regulations? And what, uh, city council member, uh, proposal goes to what committee? Because I don't think you know what you're doing. Get it right. And as far as, uh, uh, city councilman Laloe, uh, question, I think he should have done that with the, uh, contacted staff if it's not against the Brown Act. Quit wasting your time and our public's time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kevin Hooks. Kevin Hooks, if you'll unmute.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor, members of the council. Um, Mr. Laloe, councilmember Laloe, definitely appreciate you bringing this up. Um, we've had many conversations about this and look forward to many more. Um, we would like you all as the council also to hear, you know, us, a community out on ideas, specifically the core community. Uh, we know the office, uh, cannabis control and Davina tried her best to hear out, you know, from us with stakeholder meetings on how to spend money. But we think there's also solutions that should be considered, some of which councilmember Laloe has been expressing over the, over his time in office. Um, there are a lot of current businesses and core members that have lessons that have learned the hard way and are willing to share advice and help advance social equity. Um, things can be changed, you know, we're, we're past the trial and error state. So we definitely feel it's time to use these experiences to make progress. Um, there's a, again, there's a lot of us core individuals that you guys probably receive emails from that are asking to talk, and it's not a situation where we're always demanding. We do want to work with you and and help ways to make things more equitable. Um, specifically myself and my partner Lamar Walker, um, have sent out some emails. We'll send out some follow-up emails. I'm just trying to get meetings with some council members. If you have, if you have, uh, responded back and I'm just trying to get meetings with some council members. If you have, if you have responded back and would like a meeting as well as with Davina, because we have some ideas that we really, really, really feel that could not only help Sacramento, but maybe help, not maybe, but help Sacramento also set precedent for other states who are failing, failing at social equity. So again, um, look out for some emails, we'll send some follow-ups and we all look forward to working with you all. Please just listen to us, listen to the current business people, the people coming in. We all have the solutions because we are in it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay. Thank you very much then, Madam Clerk. Thank you to the members of the public. Um, we do have a motion and a second on the consent calendar, so let's now call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Lulowee.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenier.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gera.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, the consent calendar passes. Thank you. Let's move to the one public hearing item, which is item 12. It's Johnson.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Madam Clerk and members of the city council. My name is Jennifer Johnson with Engineering Services in the Department of Public Works and I have a short presentation for you. The item before you this afternoon is for the temporary closure of a portion of Diaz Avenue to vehicular traffic. The location of the gate will help prevent illegal dumping adjacent to the Department of Utilities sanitary sewer sump station. The history of illegal dumping in this area has been the cause of concern for DOU staff who need to access the sump station for routine maintenance or in an emergency. The California Vehicle Code gives the city council authority to approve the closure of the public roadway for 18 months where illegal dumping is prevalent. The California Vehicle Code also requires that the template, temporary closures be extended every 18 months in order to keep the, the gates intact to continue minimizing or eliminating the criminal activity. With the temporary closure of this street, the pedestrian access is still available to everyone. Um, as part of the process, the police department, fire department and traffic engineering all support this closure. Uh, with the supporting documents, staff recommends the approval of the street closure before you and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate it. Councilmember Geta, this is, uh, I believe your district.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, thank you, Jennifer, and thank you all of the folks involved out there. This area has been long, uh, area of illegal dumping. I think, Mr. Mayor, I drove you out there when you were running first for, for mayor uh, to check out the area. Uh, and so thank you for this. I'd like to open and close a public hearing and move the item.
A second.
It's moved and seconded. Do we have public testimony, Madam Clerk?
I have one, um, two speakers on this. The first is Robert Copeland.
I have a quest, a couple of questions. What is being dumped at this location? And how long as, uh, how long is the closure?
So the items that have been dumped have been various um, trash, including mattresses and um, several things that prevent the DOU vehicles from being able to access their facilities. And the second answer to your question, or the answer to your second question is the closure is for 18 months. And after 18 months, then um, staff brings uh, an item back for the city council to extend the closure for another 18 months.
Uh, my response to that is go after the people doing a dumping if it's, uh, because not all the homeless population, if that's, if they're doing it. Cause everybody, a lot of people dump, illegal dump.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Nikki.
Hey y'all, good evening. Um, I appreciate the report and I can agree that I know people drive down there and drop stuff off. I know that every time y'all send in the bulldozers to displace the folks that are living down at the end there, a lot of trash gets left behind as well. So I definitely understand. Um, and when folks, when folks aren't offered uh, access to trash services too, their trash also accumulates, right? So I definitely can understand the impact there. Um, I do have a concern that sort of the folks that are living there and that have been living along Morrison Creek um, weren't brought up uh, as a, as something that is part of what the impact is going to have here and how is it going to have an impact? Uh, folks are, I don't know how many of y'all know folks that live out there, but some of these folks are the same folks that were displaced from the San Juan site on Stockton Boulevard that have been moved by police up and down Stockton Boulevard by SACPD, by the Impact Team, by the Sheriff's Department, by the uh, Boulevard Partnerships, uh, contracted security forces. Um, truly been tortured up and down this Boulevard. And if, you know, if we don't have a better solution than just closing down the street, I mean, it's been heartbreaking to know these people for years and years to watch uh, like multiple of them pass away. Uh, to see their heartbreak every time uh, their stuff is destroyed or they're spending all night packing again. Um, there just needs to be a real solution um, for the folks that live there on Diaz uh, outside as well um, and along Morrison Creek.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Um, thank you. Let us then call the roll on Mayor Pro Tem Geta. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Councilmember, I didn't see you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
It's okay. I was just gonna ask a question and I don't know if this is for the Mayor Pro Tem or for staff about the last comment. I mean, when I read this item, I thought this was about preventing vehi- vehicular dumping. Um, would this in any way also be about restricting um, foot traffic into the area or otherwise relocating people from that street?
Jennifer, I think, uh, am I correct that you've uh, foot traffic, this only prevents vehicles? It's still a pathway there?
Yes, correct. The, the closure that we're proposing is for a bar gate, which is the type of gate that's um, typically seen for DOU facilities. So foot traffic will be able to continue to go past that gate.
Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
And specifically, we have kids who use that area to walk through to uh, Wilsey Wood Middle School. The bridge walking there, um, also uh, over Morrison Creek is a pathway for Wilsey Wood Middle School. So the amount of illegal dumping and just the activity that, that's made it dangerous for those kids, I think it's something we have to get ahead of. So thank you staff for your work on this.
Okay, I don't see any other uh, members or public comments. So now we're ready to call the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Lulowee.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenier.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gera.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Are there members of the public that want to speak on items not on the agenda?
I have one hand raised. Robert Copeland.
Mr. Copeland.
Hi, I'm gonna, uh, a lot of us took, uh, uh, my bank suggestion, contacted the county board supervisor about the homeless situation, about Project Room Key and the SARA program. Uh, my bank and uh, and my city council member Katie Valenzuela is the only two uh, city council members I would give a B or a A to. Rest of you get a D or an F because you are failing uh, people Sacramento, because we got different values than we, than you do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next uh, caller is phone number, last four, four, three, six, six. Mr. Davis.
Yes, this is Lambert. I want to make sure that the mayor and the city council follow up on this. I'm reading the article. It says Grants basketball, teenage basketball team adds to section titles with win over Granite Bay. And this was last week, I believe. And this is not their first time. They won a champ, a city championship. That's what I'm talking about, the city of Sacramento. They won a city championship, which was the last game played at Golden One before it was shut down for the uh, pandemic. You should recognize these young people. I bet you if, if Granite Bay would have won or El Grove, who they also beat, then you would, you would see more coverage like I see in the day's uh, paper. They're talking about El Grove and El Grove lost to Grant and somehow they ended up in another game somewhere. So give them some recognition uh, as a city. They represented this city at the Golden One. So I always often hear uh, D2 was the top priority coming out of the city manager's office, but uh, here they are, front and center. The drum line, which is known all over the country. They're nationally lo- known. They should receive funding because they have difficulty when they go traveling for uh, airline, food and travel and lodging. Other parts of the city, if their uh, youth would do that, they would be covered. That should be automatic when you have a nationally recognized drum line. That's incredible. So follow up on that and let these teenagers know that you care about them. Because they are human beings. That's amazing what they are accomplishing. They had COVID problems. I think the coach's wife or mother and sister died. So it's, it's deeper than basketball and they still won the championship for this city. So recognize them. I come from a winning tradition.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I'm proud of you, Minty.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I, I, I just want to say to Mr. Davis, I'm gonna work with Councilmember Lulowee and my other council colleagues and we are gonna honor the Grant High Basketball Team. It's a great suggestion. We're gonna do it and you're absolutely right. Um, at any time, we have a, a team that exhibits such skill and uh, and achieves something like that, we're gonna, we're gonna honor them and uh, we're all very familiar with the drum line and the great work that, that they do as well. So yes, stay tuned. We're gonna do it. Okay, Sean, you and me? Okay.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, council ideas and questions?
Mr. Mayor, we have one more speaker. Our final speaker tonight is Nikki.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, let's make sure the drum line can fly places. Come on, for sure. Um, not just a resolution at the council. Let's like, make sure those kids get what they need. Anyway, um, yeah, I appreciate that, uh, that clarification, Councilmember Valenzuela. I, I did hear that in the presentation that it would remain open to foot traffic. My concern obviously lies more in the overall kind of disregard for the people and the mistreatment and the, what, what I would call uh, torture. Um, and people call, call it that every day when they experience it. Um, it's where I get the word. Uh, would call the, the way that they've been treated and what they've been offered um, by the city through all these processes. So every time y'all put up a critical infrastructure notice on Morrison Creek or, or sweep Diaz or 63rd. Um, there's, you know, you can put on the sign that they're being offered services, but we know on the ground that those, they are not and that those services don't exist. And so I, this, this behavior, this continued behavior of bullying, harassment uh, and pushing people around, um, it's, I mean, y'all know, it's not only reprehensible. I mean, just imagine, just imagine, come out and, you know, and see um, how it looks when these people have to move every, everything, whether it's the heat or the rain, um, or whatever, when they have to choose, you know, um, in a short amount of time, what are the, what are the few things they, they can carry? Um, it's just, it's truly awful. And if you're concerned about the mental health of people living outside, um, you would do something to stop these sweeps.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much. Now let's move to uh, council ideas and questions. I know I have one. I'm gonna take about five minutes. Um, you'll indulge me, but I first want to turn to Vice Mayor Ashby.
Mayor, this is my daughter, Aleah.
Hi, Aleah.
Her is peanut. She's a little camera shy, doesn't love Zoom, but she's gonna help me uh, acknowledge International Women's Day today, Mayor, because we all know that our work to try to address diversity and equity is not about ourselves, but it's about Aleah and her generation and those who are coming behind us. And I want to particularly thank councilmembers Valenzuela and Vang for being here today and being leaders in our city and all the women who helped lead the city of Sacramento. Uh, our city attorney, Susanna Alcala Wood, of course, being the highest ranking. We have several assistant city managers, Mindy Cuppy, our clerk, lots of strong women, the first female chief of police in Kathy Lester, very proud, Kimai Nuchi, the highest ranking woman in the fire department, Maria McGonigal, who heads up our IT division. We have a lot of great women doing great work. I'm sorry that I can't think of them all off of the top of my head, but it really is an important day and an important month. And Councilmember Vang and Valenzuela and I, at the end of the month, are gonna do some, some things to celebrate some more specifically. But I couldn't let today pass without acknowledging how special and important I believe it is to still ensure that women have a seat at the table, Mayor. Right, Aleah? Okay.
Right, Aleah. We all couldn't agree with you more. Um, and thank you for uh, bringing this forward. Uh, not only a seat at the table, but leading the table. And leading the country and the world. I mean, uh, world might be a lot, a lot better if uh, we had seen those uh, kinds of advances uh, in the past that we have not yet seen. So thank you for reminding us. Appreciate it. Members, um, I want to talk about a, a delicate subject that is often before uh, our agenda. And again, this is not agendized, not up for debate, but I want to use this forum to put forward um, some thoughts on a very, very important topic. Um, the governor of the state of California tonight just finished his State of the State speech, where he talked about California and some about division. And he talked about the importance of, as he put it, rejecting binary choices. That most things, most things uh, are not either or. And that there are always, if not middle grounds, ways to address problems that don't polarize communities and don't leave uh, some people behind or out. And so tonight I want to raise a different perspective on the encampment issue. And it's one frankly, that we, I don't think we have talked uh, enough about. For our homeless population is not a monolith. And when it comes to enforcement, in my view, our policy cannot be either we sweep large groups of people or we do nothing. And of course, the coin of the realm is what we are still working towards, which is to build more capacity and create more capacity for people to uh, end their homelessness. So while we wait and work on attaining the easement for the 102 acres in South Sacramento, while we continue to work and we are working, including this week, on the large unnamed central city site, while we continue to stand up more safe ground and other larger sighting opportunities, while we grow the Department of Community Response, which we just put millions of dollars uh, towards that department to help them increase their non-law enforcement related outreach. And while we continue to solidify our partnership with the county, there still is the issue of the safety and the health of people and our communities around these growing tent encampments. Now I know we have debated back and forth the city's policy of sweeping or moving large numbers of people from business corridors or or moving large numbers of people from business corridors or neighborhoods. And obviously, some of us differ on this question. I have been clear, and I know all of you have been clear on your opinions, I've been clear on my opinion, and it's this. Until we can offer people a safe place to go, it is not right and it is merely whack a mole to sweep large numbers of people scattering them throughout the city. And of course, I hear what others say and I hear the frustration, even if I disagree with their solution. Others say that the conditions of some of these encampments are so unsafe and unhealthy that there are no better, better alternatives. And so I think we need to recognize the following. The vast majority of unsheltered people are suffering. They are victims of abject poverty or they are sick, dealing with serious mental health issues and or substance abuse issues. And at the same time, in some cases, there are legitimate concerns about criminal activity. Too many people are being released from our county jail, for example, without any, any kind of plan or care or housing or shelter for them when they are released. And many of them end up in our tent encampments. And it is true. I think we have to acknowledge that there are people, not the majority by any means, but there are some people in some of these encampments who prey on others. Whether it's open air drug dealing, which is apparently legendary, hear about it everywhere. I've heard reports, of course, we all have reports of sexual assault of innocent people, homeless people being victimized in some of these unsafe settings. And obviously, there are incidents where neighbors and businesses who are not homeless are being victimized by some of the same people. We have a great new police chief in this city and an opportunity for a fresh look at this problem and the potential of a new approach. So I want to ask the question tonight. Can we use law enforcement? I know that's not going to be a popular question in some circles, and I understand that. But can we use law enforcement, sworn police officers to actually arrest people who are engaged in serious violations of the criminal law? Not possessing drugs, not using drugs, but selling drugs, large amounts of drugs, and committing violent acts against other people. And at the same time, can we substitute out this strategy of sweeping everybody in a particular corridor? Where we are not distinguishing, in my view, those who are engaging in illegal and or serious nuisance related behaviors and those who are merely just trying to survive. So I want to ask the following questions. Can we, the following question, can we potentially reconstitute our impact teams to make some high profile arrests of, of people who are selling drugs and or engaging in illegal activity? This is not an unprecedented approach and distinction here in the city of Sacramento. I remember when I was a young council member, back in 1992, when we put forward the POP program, Problem Oriented Policing. And what was the idea behind POP? POP involved law enforcement, code enforcement, focusing on buildings, physical buildings. They could be housing units or housing complexes, where some people were victimizing the rest of the population by selling drugs or engaging in nuisance related behavior. And what did our police do? They arrested the people engaged in the illegal behavior and they did not evict or hassle the people who were living in the same complex, in the same housing unit, who were being victimized by some of the people living as their neighbors. POP is a good model. If it can work for a physical buildings, why can't a problem oriented policing approach work for these tent encampments? Allow DCR to do their work to help navigate people who are not engaged in these behaviors, the vast majority, into 102 acres, into the new downtown site, into expanded capacity, into services with, led by our county partners. And then let the police come on in, in a very targeted and limited way and focus on the people who are engaging in real crime. Now, I know the arguments. I've heard of them. Police need to witness the acts of drug dealing in order to be able to get the people out who are preying on the homeless people. That's not the way crime is investigated throughout our city when it's a priority. I'm sorry, there's a crime in a residential neighborhood, the police interview witnesses and they take forensic evidence and they do whatever they have to do. And what I'm saying here, again, if this issue, which I've said for five years is our number one issue, I've fought with my, my head has dents in it. I've been banging my head against that wall so hard to say we need more capacity and we're maybe on the verge of some breakthroughs. But by the same token, if this is a priority and the capacity in, then it should be a priority when it comes to enforcing the law, not against people who are quote technically trespassing or people who are just trying to survive and people who are preying on them. It's not a low priority call, or at least it shouldn't be. It should be a higher priority call. I hear the argument that the police themselves will be criticized. Well, I'm telling you right now is the, you know, progressive mayor of the city that I would stand behind our law enforcement officials who do some high profile arrests of anyone accused of sexually assaulting innocent women or men out on the streets of Sacramento. I will stand behind the police if they make a, any high profile arrest of people selling methamphetamine or fentanyl or any of these other awful drugs. I hear the argument, no one will prosecute. Well, I'm sorry. You know, I'm not gonna digress on Prop 47. I urge you to read today's Los Angeles Times editorial and become informed that in Texas, for example, conservative Texas, the line that's drawn in terms of the difference between a felony and a misdemeanor is $2,500. It's 9.50. 9.50 in California. Can't use Prop 47 as an excuse for everything. When someone's selling drugs, when someone is preying on other people, they should be held accountable. You know, the governor just put forward a very interesting proposal that I think is going to enable us, if done right, to be able to collaborate more with the county to get at these, the, the people who desperately need help in these encampments and get them the, the treatment, the shelter and the housing that they need. But we need a new paradigm here. We need a new paradigm because I'm frankly tired of, as you are all, taking all the heat. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of taking all the heat when we, we, we don't yet have the alternatives that we want to have. And I'm tired of taking the heat because of the cleanliness and the safety issues in our city. And so all I'm asking for is consideration of a, a different approach. I think a more logical approach. Don't sweep people indiscriminately and move people, especially people who have no place to go, who are not violating any real criminal law. But come down hard on people who are victimizing the homeless in the rest of our community. And let's engage with Chief Lester, let's engage with DCR and let's come up with a, a plan that changes this paradigm and this, this Hobson's choice of either we sweep until we have capacity or we just are, are hands off because be, be, because we don't have yet a place to put people and to treat them. I thank you. It's my job as your mayor to try to be a thought leader and a thoughtful leader and, and to provoke some discussion. And I don't want to let this just sit. I'm pleased that we are making progress on, on the siding, even though the public doesn't yet see it. I know we're on the verge of some significant breakthroughs. We are waiting for the help from the Job Corps and the Eastman on 102 acres. We are meeting intensively this week on the downtown site and, and we're continuing to build our partnership with the county. But we just can't sit idle while our city continues, continues to suffer. And you know where I come from politically and otherwise, and I put capacity in helping the people first. But that is not inconsistent with, with hearing that for people are being sexually assaulted and open air drug dealing and we're, we don't have a, we don't have an approach to that. No. We gotta, we gotta find a different and a better way. So I thank you for, I thank you for hearing me out. I, I, I look forward to a further discussion with the chief, with the manager, with my colleagues. Obviously, a public discussion and, and that we continue to be the city that is compassionate, but at the same time, we don't let people prey on others. Thanks.
Mayor, can I ask for just a bit of clarity on this? Are you asking this to be agendized for a discussion of the council?
Yes, but I think I want to take, yes, I do, but I think I want this to be, take some care here. I wanted to, and I know that the chief, the new chief is full of good ideas and is working. I, I know is thinking through a lot of ideas and I want her to have some lead in, in, in this, obviously, and suggesting what a smart approach would be here. And I know there is a real danger in everything I said tonight being misinterpreted by one side or the other. I just know it. But so be it. I, I'm gonna speak my truth. I'm not a, I'm not a force against innocent people or, or, you know, I voted for every criminal justice reform bill in the, in the land and the world, and I would continue to. But that, that, you know, in our polarized politics in Sacramento, in the state and in this country, it's like you're either for one or the other. And that's just not, that's just not the truth. And, and I'm just talking about violent crime here or a sale of drugs. Because both to me fall under the category of requiring a law enforcement response and to protect people and to protect our communities. And, and we're not doing that for a lot of the reasons. There's a lot of fear, the police are fear of being criticized, as I said, fear of being criticized. There is, you know, the issue, will, will people be prosecuted? I mean, there are a lot of questions that you can't necessarily answer, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't try to distinguish between those who are causing terrible problems to others and those who are truly victims. And by the way, I say it one more time so I'm not misunderstood. In my opinion, the vast, vast, vast majority of people out on our streets are the victims. It, but there are a few out there and there are a few out there. We gotta, we gotta be smart enough and, and nuanced enough and strategic enough to be able to distinguish between those few and, and the vast majority. And, and with the sweeps, as I've said earlier, I don't think we've done that. I don't think we've done that carefully enough.
So, you know, again, and I'll leave it alone after this. I don't want this conversation to be misconstrued either. So we are going to have a conversation, bringing something back to the council for consideration. But until such time, our enforcement posture stands.
Well, I, I understand that the, that's, the, the city council spoke loud and clear on the 14th December. I, I, and I disagree vehemently and respect it because that was the, because that was a will the majority. But I'm asking here for consideration of a more thoughtful approach. And I'm not gonna plan to bring back my own unilateral resolution in two weeks. I'm not doing that. Okay? I'm putting this out there and I want to work with you and the council and the police chief to have a strategic approach to protecting people in these tent encampments and protecting, better protecting people in the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I see nobody else. If there's nothing else to come before the city council of Sacramento, we are adjourned.